Good evening. I would like to bring the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education, November 8th, 2011, to order. And with that, we will have CAPS student recognition. Dr. Allman?
Okay. It is my pleasure to welcome two students tonight who are receiving the CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents Award. This is an annual award given to an outstanding middle school student and an outstanding high school student. And we're recognizing both this evening. I'm going to ask Sue Lemke and Neil Sullivan in a moment to talk about these students. But I have had the good fortune of talking with each of the students. Where's Kevin? There you are. Hi Erica. They're just great examples of the wonderful talent that we have here. But these two individuals are pretty exceptional. They've made contributions to their school and to the community in ways that make us all very, very proud. So I'm going to ask Sue Lemke to start and introduce Kevin Kearns to us.
Absolutely, Kevin. If you'd come up with me, that would be fantastic. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Kevin Kearns, who is so deserving of the CAPS Award. And we talk all of the time about the mission statement of Henry James Connections Challenge in Character. And Kevin really exemplifies each one of those pillars of our mission statement. I just want to take a couple of minutes to say a little bit more about that. You know, we always talk about connections, students making connections, deep understanding to the content that they're learning, and that is definitely the case for Kevin. He is a frequent flyer on the Henry James Honor Roll. But what sets him apart from his peers is that he also really reaches out to them to make sure that they have that developed understanding. He's the first to help out in class, and he does so in a very non-judgmental and kind way to his peers. He also makes wonderful connections, not only to his peers but to adults in the building. So every single adult, I mean, it's testimony that two of his teachers are from his team are here tonight in order to see this recognition of Kevin, and he just makes those wonderful connections. The challenge piece, again academically certainly, but Kevin is also a very accomplished musician. He plays multiple instruments. He composes his own music. Just a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Fisher, the jazz band teacher at the high school, came over to work with some middle school students, and I had a chance, I don't even know if you knew I was in the room, but I had the chance to watch Kevin play the piano and do some improv with some jazz selections, and that was incredible. So, you know, he challenges himself in very different ways, also physically. He is an athlete. He's played many sports. He's focusing right now on golf and running. So, Mr. Sullivan, maybe you can give your golf tips and maybe you can give your running tips. We talked about it in my office. And then finally, character. You know, that's the last pillar, but when I think about Kevin, that's the one that is most pronounced. He is every example of the HJ way. He is respectful. He's responsible. He's fair. He's kind. He's trustworthy. He's been a huge member of our Leadership Academy. For those in the audience who aren't familiar with that, we start students in the seventh grade. It's by teacher nomination through the Leadership Academy and really work in doing some direct teach with them in the spring of their seventh grade year. And then they become the ambassadors for Henry James as we welcome in our new class. And Kevin has been a huge contributor to the Leadership Academy. He's been at Open House. He's been at our summer orientation. So he is very deserving of the CAPS Award, and thank you for letting me bring him here this evening to introduce to you Kevin.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say that I'm very honored and surprised to receive this award. I just went about doing my own thing every day and helping each other out, and it's just all about my fellow classmates and the teachers at the school. They're all very kind for accepting me and recognizing me for this award, so thank you.
Good job, Kevin.
Kevin, what's your favorite instrument? I understand you play multiple instruments.
I play the piano, and I liked it the best.
How'd you fare out with this week with the no power?
Well, we had a generator at first, but then it broke down, so we ended up sleeping at a neighbor's house.
Congratulations.
Kevin, are your parents here? Would you like to take a picture? Where's Mom and Dad?
And brother.
And brother. And brother. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Usually I don't know the middle school student, but I coached Kevin in Little League, so. But Erica Sloan is with me tonight as the high school recipient of the superintendent's award. We'll start academically. Erica has been a Simsbury scholar, which tells you that you are in the top 5% of all students in the class. And I can, without getting into exact detail, I can tell you that Erica's a lot higher than that in terms of where she is. She's also recently been recognized as one of Simsbury's eight National Merit semifinalists. So that was an honor that we found out at the beginning of this school year. If you don't know how you become a National Merit semifinalist, it means that in the state of Connecticut, which has one of the highest cutoff scores for ESATs in the entire nation, you have to be in the top one-half of 1% of all students who take that exam. And Erica was one of eight Simsbury high students to do that. Obviously, a wide array of advanced placement courses that she has taken just continued to challenge herself at Simsbury High School. In terms of her extracurricular activities, there have been numerous, but interestingly, she took an interest early on in aerospace and aviation classes and founded, of her own desire to just work with Mr. Bukowski, who teaches those courses, and formed an aviation club as part of what she wanted to pursue with some friends of hers. And then last spring, after being inducted into our National Honor Society, was elected by her peers to be the president of the National Honor Society. So she serves in that capacity. I think we have a blood drive next week, right?
Yes.
So we're...
I'm watching.
We've got a captive audience here.
In addition, for several years now, along with her older sister, Kristen, who's now in college, the Sloan family started a nonprofit organization a few years ago, you may have seen around town, Kids for Paws, with helping animals in the wake of disasters. Maybe it could have kicked in in Connecticut this week, but that has still been an active organization, and the Sloan family has pursued that. Both Kristen and Erica have been a big part of that. And then we'll top it off with athletically, four-year member of the crew team, one of the most accomplished rowers, and in the first boat, and then also selected as the captain of the girls' crew team. So just an accomplished young woman. On top of that, one of the nicest people you're ever going to meet. And it's just my pleasure to be able to bring her to the board as our high school recipient. And her parents, Lynn and Mark, are here as well, so thank you. Erica Sloan.
Very good. Erica, so what do you do in your spare time?
Well, to be honest, crew takes up a lot of the spare time, but I absolutely love it. I'm actually not in the first boat. Not quite that good, but I love it. It's an incredible story. Kristen is too. I mean, like, it really just, it's a great team, and everyone is like such a great sense of camaraderie with everyone, and it's an incredible story as well.
I'll ask you a question. You were taking aviation classes, you said?
Yes.
What got you interested in these particular classes at Simsbury High?
I've always loved flying. I never really thought about the field itself, but I just thought it would be interesting to take my freshman year, and I ended up falling in love with it, and I really want to try to get my own private pilot license eventually, so.
Good. Erica, very good.
We're not getting a plane.
Try a car once, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One of the ways that this award is celebrated annually is that the students and their families are invited to a luncheon, which had to be canceled because of the storm and the lack of power, et cetera. So we're hoping that we can reschedule it, and so more details later. We'll be back in touch with you. But I want to thank the parents for giving us such wonderful young people to work with, and we appreciate all of your constant support of our schools over the years that your children have been here, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for all you do. My good luck tonight with my decision.
We're going to have a photo op now. Photo op, absolutely.
Oh, we're going to do a photo op?
Yes.
Photo ops for everybody.
Good. How are you? Great to see you.
Good to see you. Congratulations.
Earlier today, Kevin Kowalski asked me if he could come to the board meeting. I'm imagining you have some things you want to say, but I'm going to preempt you, Kevin, by telling you how much we appreciate all of your efforts. I'm speaking as superintendent of schools, but I'm also speaking as a citizen of Simsbury. Kevin has been literally living this natural disaster that we faced since last Saturday night, Saturday night a week ago. So, you know, my experience is that the Simsbury Public Schools, high school became a shelter, but that we've had a lot of adjusting to do in terms of providing education to students during this difficult time. We've had, obviously, everybody knows, we've had school closure, et cetera. Every single step of the way, Kevin has been there by our side, helping us problem solve, helping make sure that the shelter functioned effectively, making sure that we got information that we needed. I just can't imagine a better partner and somebody who cares more about his work than Kevin Kowalski. And I think the success with which we were able to manage this crisis is largely due to Kevin's efforts, and I just can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you on behalf of the board, but also of the students in our system and the families and so forth, so.
Thank you very much for the words. I appreciate all the support. I do want to say, on behalf of the emergency management team, and it truly is a team, it's not just one person, it's a team, and that's what made it really neat. Everything came into place, and they recognized Chris. He was part of the team originally when we first started developing and building a program to react to things like this. And it just works, works out so well when everything comes together, you know, there's some sticking points, but you know what? Just go right through it and move on to the next item. It's been great. It's a culminated effort with everybody, with the school, and some folks at Burke did tremendous job. He found out how it works and how Dave is. I'm not sure how many times you called Dave. I'm not sure whether you yelled at him or if you asked him a question. Certainly, the management team here came out in force, supported the people in town. We averaged, to give you an idea of how busy the shelter was, we averaged approximately 1,150 people a day processing through that shelter. At one point, we were feeding 600, 800 people for dinner. We had 350 people staying overnight. We actually fed in excess of 6,000 meals through that shelter, 6,000. That's pretty remarkable considering, you know, this is not a normal feed, it's done under emergency conditions. We had a tremendous amount of volunteers that supported it. We had a tremendous amount of food that we were able to use to reduce costs. You know, while, you know, it's important to help our people, it's also important to maintain and control costs. It's not an open season. It's, you have to maintain a level of expenditure. But everyone came through, and I want to thank the team here and thank the support of this board, and also thank the, right down to the maintenance workers that was at the high school. Tremendous job, tremendous. I mean, they were doing things outside their scope of work that, you know, they just did it, and it was done. And that's what made it work. So it's certainly an honor to work with them and work with the team that's out there. Food service group, tremendous how they went through. So I really want to thank everyone for the support to this team. That's what made it work. That's what made it work to, we had a lot of folks that came here from other towns and didn't want to go back to their own towns. That was kind of an interesting point. We still have currently a shelter in town. We've downsized it to the church, and it's working out well, and hopefully we'll downsize it to zero by the end of the week. So we are still working with it. If we're going to jump right to the other point, the next point, if I could, and that is our concern, our priority started the day before yesterday to maintain a safe area for the kids to get to school. And that was done through CLMP, AT&amp;T, and the wire spokes. As you know, if you've driven around town, it's been, this is a catastrophic storm, and I'm not going to get into the ends of who's bad in this and who's good or whatever. It's a catastrophic storm, and we have to react to it to make it better and to make it safe for our kids to get to school. So that's been a priority for us for the last two days. I'm here to tell you that we feel very comfortable in starting school tomorrow and let the kids go to school, and I feel we're taking adequate measures. In fact, just a few minutes ago, we made another commitment to put more police officers on, keeping more on tomorrow morning during the school time. We feel that's a prudent measure to take, at least to help the kids if there's any problems. So we're keeping people on from the sea shift. The chief has agreed to that. We have wire watchers who come from CLMP that are going to be onsite in several areas. Fortunately, we're in pretty good shape in most areas. There are some very difficult places that are having problems getting restored and also clear areas such as Hill de Crest, Minister Brook, and those areas, which were hit tremendously hard this afternoon, and that's where we spent a lot of our times actually in those streets looking to make sure. There's been multiple, multiple trips with the bus companies, with JR and Bob going through with Burke, and we put CLMP people in the buses to see if they can make it, what the problems were. So we've taken pretty good precautions to make sure that everyone's going to be safe tomorrow to school. And I just want to make sure that you have a warm feeling, quite frankly, that members taking the inspection, and want you to know what's going on in case someone asks, because I'm sure that's what the parents want to know, how is the, how is the thing going? So I can take any questions, and then I got to go back downstairs. One second.
When Kevin says downstairs, he means this is the nightly regional emergency operations center that he's been at every one.
He's participated also.
I've been there a lot.
Just keep everybody away from him, okay?
That's a conflict tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry. You pulled a fire.
How did days work, right, Kevin?
Well, at this point. So I'll entertain any questions that might be able to help you, if you have any.
I know, we had the meeting yesterday at the high school at 2:00 for CLMP, and it was one also today, I believe?
No.
Okay. Were there any particular questions that you feel, parents? I know there were a lot of parents that were there that asked questions of safety or wires and things, anything in particular that has changed in the 24 hours or start of school tomorrow?
Well, I think the scope of the problem has reduced substantially. You know, where we used, where we, they made a big push on clearing streets and winding up wires. Are there still some out there? Yeah, there is. And those are where we're really trying to focus our wire watchers on. And there could be some places out there that we didn't catch. We picked up a couple today on roads, but they're private roads, and I'm not sure if the buses go on them or not, but kids may walk down to a bus stop. So we're particularly concerned about that. I can say one thing that I'm hoping that the parents will do, and that is make sure the kids get to school safely. If it takes a few minutes to walk them to a bus stop, there is a new rerouted schedule that's been posted to all the parents, and make sure they get there safely. It is an important factor. You know, we put this forward, but we can't be everywhere, and we can't look at every child as they get on the bus. So if they could, please make sure that they get to the bus stop safe. The other item is, once they get off the bus at the end of the day, make sure there's somebody there to receive them. And it may be a group of parents that'll get together and say, "I'll drop them off in the morning, and then you pick them up in the afternoon." If they need the carpool to do that, please do that. You know, it's going to be for the next couple of days. We just have to get through this. This next couple of days will be in good shape.
I just want to take a minute because I know the cameras are on. We did send out about two dozen revised routes today. They went on our School Connect telephone system. They went on our listserv, and it's also posted on our district website. So, and if a parent doesn't know what, can't access any of those, they can call us here. But I just want to make sure for the public who's listening, we do have those revised routes, and there are 24 of them. So it's not a small number, but we really believe that we've got the, all of the dangerous situations analyzed, and the route revisions take care of the problems.
Yes, and again, you know, just as long as everyone's watching out for the kids, that's what we want. And if, by the way, just one last thing that goes, that has nothing to do with the school, I just want to, because we're telling everyone, if you have a wire still down in your neighborhood, if you have a wire still down in your house, please call CLMP. They don't automatically come out. They know stuff is down, but they, it works all on a queue system. It comes up, and that's, and they'll send a job ticket out. Even though you've called once, and I'm sure most people have called at least once.
Twice.
So just please call again, and they'll keep it into the queue.
And the same thing for AT&amp;T and Cable?
Same thing for AT&amp;T and Comcast. Yes, absolutely. We have a rep downstairs right now giving us a briefing on AT&amp;T, and unfortunately, in some areas, he said, "Well, we only had showing 260 phones out." Well, there's thousands out, and they're replaced because they can't call. So it will, it would be a lot easier if people just called, and if, obviously, if your phone's down and you need to have someone else call for you, please do that. That's all I have. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you so much for coming.
I just want to make one final comment that, from, you know, from the moment that Kevin called Saturday night to ask for the shelter to be open until today, I mean, he's been a great leader. He has not ever gotten rattled. And all the preparation and training that the Public Safety Subcommittee Group does, which I represent the school on, has made a big, big difference. And this has just been a great overall, you know, effort by every volunteer and public safety agency in town.
And social services, Mickey and Kathy, they were incredible, you know, in that system, and to keep everything organized and safe, and that's the key, is keeping everybody safe and fed. Worked out very well, but thank you very much. Thanks all.
Take care, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we continue on. Any, we have a public audience. Anyone in the public would like to address the board? Is that it? Yes? No. Okay, we'll move on with board and administrative communications. And we'll start with Corinne. Absolutely. How was your week?
Um, it was okay.
What have you been doing?
I really have nothing. I have no idea what's going on.
All right, let me ask you. I have obviously no power, and you were...
Yeah.
How did you survive without Starbucks and internet?
Uh, I didn't. I just slept most of the time.
Go back rested.
Yeah. And, I don't know, I hung out with my sister, and I worked, but...
Are you anxious to get back to school?
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan, did you hear that? Mark was down. How's your release?
I went into Brookside for a luncheon, and I had six senior boys tell me they can't wait to get started.
That's always a good feeling. We don't wish to happen again with a power outage, but that's a very good feeling, so good. Well, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
To school and the rest of your classmates, and Mr. Sullivan and Mark with your students back to school. Good. Susan, how'd you feel?
We got power back today. I'm a happy lady. But I did just want to express my thanks to everybody involved with the shelter. I heard nothing but great things from everybody I spoke to about how it was run and the reception that they received when they got there. And so kudos to Kevin and to Mickey and to Neil, to you and everybody at the high school. Burke and Aaron, thank you so much. The communications were really well done. I know a lot of people relied on Facebook because, like me, if you, depending on who your cell server was, everything was down, but you could get your Facebook app or, so that was a really helpful tool, and we have a lot of people to thank for doing all the posting and whatnot. But I would like to stress, and I said this to Aaron, had it not been for my cellphone being registered with the School Connect phone call system, I would have had no information. So I strongly advise anyone who has not registered their cellphones to please do so, because when everything else didn't work, I could at least get a message on my cellphone. And that's how I found out my bus routes were changed for tomorrow. So I am very grateful, and I advise everybody to do the same.
Susan, the way our system works is that it will call every number. The School Connects will call every number that's on the emergency card that gets entered into the system. So it really is important that if you...
Update it. Make sure it's got the right number. Absolutely.
Yeah, the communication has been fantastic. I like it when, I mean, my cellphone will ring, my wife's cellphone in the house phone will ring, office phone will ring. Yeah.
And it was Burke. And it was Burke. It was nice to hear Aaron's voice today.
Yeah, the communication was fantastic. We really knew what was, what was going on and what was coming in.
Thank you.
I'm good, man.
Good, yeah. Chris?
All set.
Tara?
I'm good. I again reiterate the same things. You got to pull the good out of the bad, and I think a lot of good things got done and helped a lot of people. So you guys all worked. I saw people at the shelter. All of our administrators were there, helping support and doing whatever needed to be done. It was great to see real team effort.
Burke?
Really quick final word on the shelter for this meeting. Just really thankful of all of our staff that they were able to come in and help our shelter efforts. We were a part of a much larger effort, but we played a big, important role. Terms of other items, facilities and enrollment, we was going to have its first task force meeting. That was canceled. And in speaking with Mike Goman this past week as one of our co-chairs, we're going to attempt to contact members and try to start earlier at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Wednesday the 16th, and get information out for that meeting. And I put in your packets tonight a copy of the draft report that just came in. It's all, just wanted to save, have it printed out, emailing it out to the task force members.
So the meeting was canceled on the first, obviously, due to the power, and it'll be on the 16th.
And that was our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to package more into that.
Matt?
I'm all set.
I bet you are. One thing, just... You know, we'll always be saying, "What would Matt say?" You know, forget bye-bye.
Oh, no, we're not saying that anymore.
So you think you're all set? This is Matt Curtis's last meeting as Director of Human Resources for the Simsbury Schools. He's moving on to be an assistant superintendent in a town that shall be unnamed because it's our rival. That's Glastonbury.
The other Berry.
The other Berry. I just want to say on behalf of the administration that we are, and the staff, the whole central office staff, that we're going to miss Matt tremendously. He's been here about five years. He's moved through several different positions because of his talent and commitment and skill. We have benefited from having you here, Matt, for those five years, and our system is a better place for you, having worked here. We were sad to see you go, but we're also very excited for you because I know this is just another step in what is going to be a very exciting career and a very accomplished one. So keep in touch and make sure that you remember to do it the Simsbury way.
The other Berry.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's been a wonderful experience here, and I value all the relationships and opportunities I've had to work with some of the folks out in the audience too, and this team has been, it's been great. So thank you.
Very good. I just like to reiterate, Matt, because I think I was on the actual interview team with you when you first came here from Buttonball School in Glastonbury to Simsbury Public Schools, and I asked the question, I said, "So, you think you want to be a superintendent someday?" And you said, "Well, I'll keep it in the back of my mind, but I'm just so excited to be here now."
Thanks.
But again, Matt, just to reiterate, it's been five years gone by very quickly, and Simsbury lost, but it'll be a great addition to Glastonbury Public Schools. And I know our colleagues over there, I was speaking to several of them, are very excited for you to be on board with them. So you're going from a very good board in Simsbury to another great board in Glastonbury. So best of luck to you.
I appreciate it.
Good, good.
I have a couple of items.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
In your folders this evening is a letter that Tor Fisk wrote to the colleges and universities where our seniors have applied for early action or early decision. This letter went to any institution where our students may have had difficulty getting applications in because of the, the natural disaster that we had here in Connecticut. And so, this personal contact with each admissions director is going to be, I think, very helpful to our students. That said, our, some of our counselors came in, and we set up a little bit of a mini-computer lab here, and a number of people did use it to, if they didn't have Internet at home, they could use it here, and they could get their applications completed. I think the number that, of students that are impacted by not being able to get the early decision, early action, applications in is limited, but this letter will certainly help. And I appreciate the good work that Tor has done during this trying time. There's nothing, I mean, you spend, you know, a whole career in the Simsbury Schools, and you get ready to submit your application on November 1st, and then this natural disaster happens, and it can be very devastating for young people and families. So, Corinne, were you one of the ones that...
No.
No, okay.
I handed mine in earlier.
The second piece that's in your folder that I wanted to address is the fact that there is an issue that's become, come before the State Board of Education around the burden of proof in special education. I included here an article, an informative article for you to read. This is an issue that we're going to talk about over the next several months. I think that Cabe and CAPS are both urging Boards of Education to consider the issue and to perhaps support a proposed amendment to the statutes around burden of proof. But this, I think there's a long way for us to go before we're ready to consider any kind of position. But what I'm doing is providing you with some basic information, and I will, over the next few months, so that you get familiar with what the issues are around burden of proof. At one point, Helen Donahue will then make a presentation to us in terms of how it impacts Simsbury. So, this is just one of, I hope, many articles that I can provide you so that you can gain a deeper understanding of what the issues are. And I think that is it. Oh, you know, we, again, as Burke said, just one more comment about the shelter and the emergency operations. I see that both Neil and Sue aren't here at the moment, but our administrative team covered the shelter 24/7. There were shifts, three shifts a day, right through the night, shifts on the weekend, and they were there in a support role in case Mickey LaCorsbeck needed anything to run the shelter effectively. Mickey did an incredible job, and I hoped, she's a very unassuming person, but I hope at some point to bring her here, because she does so much for the Simsbury Schools. And this is just another example of where she was helping take care of students and families and little children and so forth, and was, again, another great partner to work with. She's a selfless person and did a tremendous job. Our custodians were simply amazing. They, again, manned the building 24 hours a day, multiple shifts, some people working double and triple shifts to make sure that they could keep the showers clean, the bathrooms clean, the kitchen clean, et cetera. And they just did an amazing job. Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of, of the custodians, did a great job just organizing everybody, keeping schedules up and making sure that things float smoothly. We have a lot of unsung heroes in this process, and I know we're going on and on about it. But if you were there on a day-by-day basis, you would understand how important the work that these people did was to the larger community, to make sure that the shelter was functioning. And also that we were, you know, we were able to not only help at the shelter, but get our buildings ready and get all the debris moved from, removed from the buildings. It was just an incredible team effort and an example of the professionalism and the dedication of our staff. Glenda Martin and her folks in the kitchen, they did a phenomenal job. Caterina, I don't, what's her, I just...
Carbone.
Carbone, okay. Caterina was, it's her kitchen that they were cooking in, so she was there. We had to force her to go home at some point, because she had been there so long and had worked so hard. But, again, just always there to help. Again, we played a support role, because the women's auxiliary were also in the kitchen. But without Glenda and Caterina and some other of the cafeteria workers, getting, you know, that many people fed would not have been possible. So, just a lot of stories of people who did tremendous work, whose work might not necessarily be noticed, but it was the underpinning of a successful week for this community. So, that's it for me.
And it's too bad Neil left. I was going to ask him to say a few words about his, his tenure as a, as a shelter administrator this week.
Neil spent a lot of time at Simsbury High School. Several nights, yeah.
So, he did, and so, but yeah, again, I also had the opportunity to take a shower at the shelter at, at the high school, so, and, and had to talk to a lot of town residents that were there. And yes, it is Caterina's kitchen. I tried to go in and help her, and she just shoot me right out of there. But she did say she was cooking, and she said, "I want to make sure that the residents in town, you know, the, the families, the seniors and parents and students, you know, are fed, you know, and fed, fed well, so that, you know, they're able to get up tomorrow morning and, and start another day with power or no power." So, again, Steve and custodial staff and kitchen, and, and also to you administrators. I mean, you, looking at you now and looking at you a week ago, I saw your faces, I saw your eyes, what you went through in, in to make, make this work. So, again, heartfelt thanks from, from everyone. And I did hear from a lot of residents that were there how much they felt that this was more than just a shelter, that they felt very warm and secure, and the school staff made them feel that way. And for many of them, it was the first time that they walked into this high school. They had never been in. And when they did walk in that high school, they were quite amazed with the renovation and, you know, how you can accommodate that many people. So, so that was, that was very good. So, again, thank you for all you've done. All right, moving right along, we have recommended actions. We have Exhibit 1, Approval of Minutes of October 25th Workshop. It seems so long ago, doesn't it?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of October 25th meeting on Exhibit 2. Again, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now on to Exhibit 3, Personnel.
We have one recommendation this evening, Lydia, that is the retirement of Dorothy Norman, our Supervisor of Special Services. You all know Dorothy, and she has been an extremely dedicated employee to us over the past seven years, has done wonderful things for both students and families in the area of special education, has provided incredible support for our administrators during her tenure. And Dorothy has decided to retire at the end of the year. We're excited for her, and I know Helen, she'll be greatly missed, and she'll be greatly missed for our entire organization as well. But we would ask that the Board accept the resignation of Dorothy Norman.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you for many years of great service.
Absolutely.
I mean, just, still a lot for our service, she serviced a lot of students and done a lot of, with a lot of care.
Absolutely.
Helen, she's been your right-hand person for seven years, so, absolutely. We're happy for her as well. Absolutely, happy retirement. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now on to Exhibit 5, Gift to Terriffill School. Four, four, I'm sorry, four, gift to the, gift from, no, gift to Terriffill School.
Yeah.
Right.
In keeping with the Board's policy on gifts and donations, we'd ask the approval for a very unique partnership of donors. We have the Terriffill PTO, the sixth grade class, as well as the seed program, a total donation of $5,034 that will be put towards a traverse climbing wall for the school gym.
I'm going to ask a question. What is a traverse climbing wall?
We, it, it is something that would be used as a part of our physical education class, and actually opens up, it actually opens up and can be closed up when it's not in use and, and, you know, safe. And it's, it's, it's similar to ones we have in, in Latimer Lane. It's not, it's not the same thing at the high school, I believe, in James.
Hey, is he in the audience?
Yes.
Would you like to...
Do you know anything about it?
Comment?
I'm excited.
It's a learning experience for us.
Yeah. No, I, that, that sounds fantastic. The sixth grade class always tries to give some type of gift to the school. I think the kids would be ecstatic to hear that that's, that's going to be coming our way.
Terrific.
Great, great. Wish I were a sixth grader.
Well, fifth grader, so you can use it next year.
I'm a sixth grader, absolutely. Good, thank you.
No questions?
Any questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion passes. This is great, so... When do they think they'll get this?
I've, I've not heard what the lead time is.
Very exciting, very good for Terriffill School and the students.
Great. And again, thank you to all those that contributed, all the, the money for this. It'll be a very worthwhile project. Exhibit 5, The 2012 Board of Education Meeting Schedule.
So, what you have before you is the proposed schedule for 2012. As you know, we approve meetings on a calendar year basis, and this is a recommended action that we adopt this meeting schedule for 2012. As you know, we have, we, we schedule all of the meetings on an, you know, every other week basis, but oftentimes we'll, if it looks like we don't need a meeting, we can cancel, but this gives us all of the meetings that are possible for the year.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
I'm just, damn, workshops come later.
Workshops we put in as extra meetings, so...
Okay. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the meetings will be scheduled, will be on the website, correct? Because they're coming here. Moving along, Exhibit 6, Cancellation of Our November 22nd Meeting.
So, speaking of...
Speaking of scheduling and...
It's 2011, though.
We have addressed all of our November agenda items this evening. At this point, there is nothing on the agenda for November 22nd, so we're suggesting that the Board might want to consider canceling that meeting. Traditionally, it's, it's the, it's the second meeting, which is during the week of Thanksgiving, and it's, oftentimes, families are busy with activities. So, we're suggesting that the Board might want to consider not having the November 22nd meeting.
It's a sign of a very astute Board that we're able to accomplish what we have to in one meeting. So, with that being said, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. We are now on to Information and Reports, and we have Exhibit 7, The Policy First Reading.
Policy Committee met on October 28th, and we have several policies to bring forward tonight. Most of these due to the last legislative session that was held. Matt's going to give you more information about it.
I believe we have five, five policies, and I'll just provide a brief overview. A few of them are pretty dense, and we'll take some time to read through. They have, they have the policies on, yep. The first is Policy 4701, which is Abuse and Neglect Registry. This is a new policy, and essentially, it's, it's going to be part of our hiring practice in which certified employed, employees hired after July 1st, 2011, must submit to DCF records check. As part of our normal hiring process, we do a criminal background check, fingerprint check. This is an additional layer to that. We've already put a structure in place to do that. DCF has been responsive. Our new hires this year all went through this process, so it's essentially a policy that just delineates the steps we need to take. The second policy is 4900.1, it's Reports of Suspected Abuse or Neglected Children. It's a revision of a current policy. We've always been mandated reporters in our schools. This policy, some of the, the changes are the role of DCF in the investigation. It's more of a collaborative relationship between the school and DCF where they work together. Rather than the superintendent making the final report, it's the commissioner, the report goes to the Commissioner of, of Education. Yes?
Just a question in sort of, in light of recent sports events.
Yep.
Are coaches made a report?
Yes, they are. Yep. That's a good point, Mike. It also, both this policy and the bullying policy that we'll talk a little bit, expand the definition of school employee. Coaches have always been under that umbrella, but even bus drivers now, paraprofessionals, people that spend, you know, the majority of their time around kids, are all under that umbrella now. So, we have to provide professional development, development to them on a three-year basis, and on new hires, need to provide professional development through DCF as well. So, all those pieces are laid out in the new policy.
When do you have the training for when you hire new coaches or assistant coaches? When do you normally have training for them, or when will you be?
Well, the training mandate is new.
Okay, so you'll...
So, so that will be...
Upon hiring of...
Upon hire, correct. Correct. Yep. And that training will, is provided by DCF. And more details need to come out on that.
Do, do the legislation.
Correct.
And so, this background check is going to apply to a broader class of employees then, too?
Yes. Yep. First certified employees, and then the next year, Mike, all employees. The third policy is 5113.4, it's Student Withdrawal from School. Again, we've had a policy in place. Now, the legislation has changed the age from 16 to 17, in which a student can withdraw with consent of a parent. Next policy is 5117.1. It's a policy we put in place for our Agricultural Science Education Program, and it's to clarify the district school that we identify as the one in which we'll send our students to. The law says that we can identify one or more schools in which we'll send students to. We have identified Suffield, VoAG is the program that we'll identify our students to, and then we are also responsible for transportation. So, that's why in this case, we're selecting one. It makes the, the transportation cost more reasonable for the district.
Would there be another school if students attended that were of the same caliber as the Suffield-VoAG, or is that the school in our area for our students?
I mean, that is the full day program in our school. There's a half-day program right now in Bloomfield. Our students have been very successful at Suffield, and I know our guidance counselors have, have confidence in the program when they're advising kids. So, if a new program came into place more locally that we felt good about, we could always revise the policy. But, but really, from a transportation standpoint, you need to kind of focus the efforts of where we send kids to, to fray the cost, because we're responsible for reasonable transportation up to $6,000 a student. And if we have to go to a location outside of the immediate area where we don't transport other kids, and had to add a small bus, for example, to do that, it's like $35,000. So, it becomes very challenging.
Absolutely, that would be a higher cost to that.
The last policy is one that we've heard quite a bit about, and that's the Bullying Policy and School Climate Plan. Certainly, new legislation has been passed around bullying in school climate. And just to hit on kind of some highlights of that policy, it's really a shift from more of a reactive policy in how we go about investigating incidents when they come to our attention to what schools can do to promote a better climate for kids. So, it's really divided into two parts when you do have the time to take a look at a policy. The new definition of bullying, which is now inclusive of cyberbullying, which now falls under the responsibility and the kind of the realm of the school when we investigate, and a school climate plan, which puts into place the different interventions that the school, schools in the district support when trying to promote positive school climate. And we feel we have excellent things in place at the elementary level for some time. You've heard Sue, Sue talk tonight about her program at the middle school, and now Neil with the Trojan Code at the high school. So, we're positioned very well for this. It's about open lines of communication. It's about supporting parents and students' concerns when they bring them forward, and it's just about good practice overall. So, I mean, it's, it's a policy that supports that, one that's definitely worth taking the time to, to read through. It's pretty comprehensive. But I know there's a lot of talk about the legislation and the law. A lot of it is not new. It's just reinforcement and awareness that we need to continue to be vigilant about this topic because it's important to kids and their overall success in schools.
Is our definition same as the statute?
Yes.
Of what bullying is?
Yes.
All right.
On this particular policy, the bullying prevention, it is quite, it is quite detailed. And I hope that my colleagues have a chance to read that. A lot of questions have come from parents. Is this something that we're gonna be able to discuss with parents? Or if they have serious questions on this? Because again, new legislation was just enacted July 1st, and a lot of parents aren't quite sure what this new policy proposal or legislation means to them or to their children or their school or school system. Is there some, how do we seminate information? Correct information, accurate information of the new law and how we interpret it?
I think, you know, a couple steps. One requirement of the new legislation is that by July 1st of this year, the board needs to approve the school climate plan and the policy. That needs to be submitted to the state of Connecticut.
July 1st, 2012? Or 11?
January 1st. The policy needs to be submitted. Some of the things in the policy don't need to be incorporated until July of next year. And then I think, you know, we've already had a session with our administrators about the key points of the policy. And I think as we move closer to, you know, this is in place and it's passed as policy, we communicate that out to schools. In our handbooks this year, we made a statement that the policy's under revision. This is the new definition. And I know when parents call and have concerns, again, I think the best way to communicate this is through our actions and how we deal with these difficult situations.
Mike, I think related to your point, this, as with all of our policies, this is reviewed by our attorneys to make sure that, excuse me, they're in alignment with statute. And particularly with this one, since it's been a very complex kind of evolution of the statute, we made sure that Shipman and Goodwin had reviewed it and that we are doing absolutely what we should be doing in relation to this topic.
So the one question that was posed to me, and I confess I hadn't looked at it until earlier today. Someone told me about it. In the definition, we use the word repeated. Was there any discussion about whether bullying can happen in one instance?
I think that's a great question, and that's the one that comes up most frequently. And when we get in conversations with parents, our students report acts of inappropriate behavior, use the word bullying. What we often try to talk about is, let's look at this event, and let's put interventions in place that are successful for the kids and for the families. It's not about labeling a certain behavior, bullying or not. It's about how we address the behavior with consequences and preventative measures. So by definition, it needs to be repeated. That doesn't mean you can't have a really serious incident take place that you handle seriously, and there's serious consequences, and then there's an intervention plan put in place. So that's where, you know, you try not to get, spend all your energies focusing on, does it fit the definition? We'd rather spend our energies on what can we do to help the kids and stop the behavior, so...
And I agree completely. And that was raised to me today, and I hadn't even thought about it until they raised it to me. And I said, I don't know the answer to that question, whether you can have an incident that constitutes bullying, and it happens once.
Doesn't fit the definition. Doesn't mean it's not entirely a serious, you know, incident, but it does not fit the definition of bullying because it's not repeated.
I think, you know, once these plans are in place, we can bring to the board the collection of what each school's plan looks like, so you can see the extent of work that goes on. And I really agree with what Matt said, is we have a great foundation for this with our character education programs across the system. There'll be some changes and some tweaks based on this. And we can bring those plans to the board next fall.
They'll be good, that would be, because I know it's, I know it was an original law, and a lot was added to it. And I know at the legislature, they had really had great discussion on this because I sat in some of the hearings on these things. And again, it's, the more you hear about it, again, it's just not one of those policies that's black or white.
The focus has really shifted to the overall, what is the school doing to promote those positive behaviors in consistent language and clarify expectations? In a way, a little bit from, what was that specific incident? And is it bullying or not bullying? I think a much more proactive stance.
Can you answer one question? And when I was reading some of this, and I'd also heard the Safe School Climate Coordinator, is that to be in place by July 12? I've heard that person through the legislature and what that is.
Yeah, so really, different roles will have to be defined. And there are roles that people already have, and it's essentially creating an additional name. So I mean, the district needs to have a Safe School Climate Coordinator. That would be my position or my responsibility. I have that now. We don't call it the Safe School Climate Coordinator, but it's the same roles and responsibilities. And each school needs to have an individual climate specialist that's responsible for that work, and that will be an administrator at each of the schools.
Hey, Matt, I know that in the policy, it designates that if something constitutes illegal activity, that's what would trigger notification to law enforcement.
Yep.
Do you feel that there's pretty good clarity around what would and would not trigger, you know, reaching out to law enforcement? I know that was one of the concerns about the legislation overall. How comfortable are we that we've kind of got a pretty good clarity around that now?
Yeah. I think one thing that benefits us here in Simsbury is we have a great relationship with the police department. So we can reach out and have those conversations and help get clarity on their end as well.
Yep.
And feel confident that information will be confidential, and we're getting good advisement. So, you know, with the school resource officer at the high school is involved in many of the conversations about difficult incidents that take place. From my position, I'll have conversations with the police department to ask their opinion on things. But if we're in a situation where we're feeling uncomfortable, we are on the side of caution and contact the police department.
And again, our school resource officer is...
Brad Chase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Corinne, you have any questions about any of these policies, in particular this one?
No, not really.
So this is first reading, and we'll bring it back in December. And depending on whether or not there's questions or suggested changes from board members, we'll follow that with adoption.
Moving on to exhibit eight, our six-year capital improvement projects.
Okay, this is the first step in the process. We started with is showing you the six-year plan that was approved last January. And we have also included a first draft of the next six-year plan, 2012 through 18. And we've not, we've not attempted to move things around much. We just really took off those things from the 11, 12 year. And we did, as highlighted in the memo, we did look at moving back the central school partial roof replacement project, which was also pushed back last year based on the annual inspection of our roofs. It is still deemed to be in good condition. And I believe Dave has said for a number of years that while it's beyond what the normal useful life would be, this is one of the first single-ply rubber roof systems that we have had experience with. So we're having good experience. And we are feeling we could go another, another year on that. So we pushed that back to the year 2013, 14. And then also added a high school generator improvement project, as I explained, in light of really utilizing the generator, even though it's not a few years old, it was part of the renovation. It's the first time it's actually been used for a real event. And so now we know that there are some areas that we would like to see also have generator power. $50,000 is really just a placeholder at this point. And it's important to have the engineers really evaluate what the current generator could do in terms of expanding or moving those areas that can be, that can be powered. One thing that's not on this list, because these are generally $50,000 or higher, we have a maintenance garage that's next to the town highway garage that does not have a generator. And Steve had given me a quote on that previously, probably about three or four months ago. And that is something that, while I don't think it'll rise to this capital level, that we would also want to make sure that we invest in. So we have, we have a follow-up meeting in December to talk about this further. We have to flesh out some of the specifics of these projects further. There may be some cost estimates to update, such as the Henry James project. And ultimately, we submit this to the Board of the First Selectmen, and it's really part of the overall town capital budget. That's, that's the basic process. We will...
Is the Board of Selectmen done theirs yet?
They have started theirs. And over the last several years, we've sort of had staff level or workshop-type conversation to try to coordinate because there's an overall debt limit that the Board of Finance sets.
That's the other question.
This has not been looked at in that consideration. We're bringing forward what we know as our current needs, and that's really the starting point.
So I'm just curious, says, what's, do we know from the Board of Finance, what's rolling off from the debt cycle? That's, how much are they gonna free up?
No, we don't know that.
We don't have, I don't think we have an updated debt status.
One of my concerns, and we've talked about it with Board of Selectmen, Burke and I have had conversations, is that we had to forego projects for a few years because of some town obligations. And so we have some projects, particularly, we're really looking at Henry James as a need, and we're hoping to move it forward. Because as you know, we may approve it, even if it gets approved this year, we don't actually get to start the renovation for a couple of years. So we're hoping that there's enough room for some Board of Ed projects. The district infrastructure, there was one year where we did not, we do that on an every other year basis. And there was one year where we didn't get that funding. And for the next three or four years, we really saw the impact in our ability to maintain our technology infrastructure. And as you know, it just gets more and more complicated and complex. Really important that we keep up the network infrastructure. So we haven't begun those conversations yet, but we're really hopeful that this year, we can move something from our capital improvement plan forward. We had tried for a while to have an other, every other year, the Board of Selectmen one year. Several of you might have been in the room when we had that discussion. But we really sort of lost track of that every other year plan when some of the town projects that were really time-bound came along. So part of it related to Ethel Walker and some other things that needed to happen.
Do we, just, while we're on the Board of Finance, do we, are they still planning to have their public hearing? Do we know if that's changed? Do you know, Burke?
I've not heard about any changes to that.
So that's supposed to be this...
Coming up next week.
Next week?
Seventeenth.
On the 15th?
I had announced it last...
I know, and I can't remember.
I forgot to announce it this week.
It's on the 15th, I believe at 6:00. That was the original date?
It was, it was moved.
Well, Burke's looking for that.
Seventeenth, Thursday the 17th. 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM, Thursday the 17th at 6:00 PM. And where will that be? Downstairs or up here?
It's in this building, and I believe it's downstairs. Board of Selectmen.
And that's the opportunity for... That, Board of Finance meeting.
Yeah, so what we will do is, as we move this towards the new Board of Education Capital Improvement Plan, this is our proposal of where, and again, there's not much change, but we've added a few things, moved a couple of things around. You know, just if you want to compare the old one to the new one, and then also think about whether or not the timing looks right for you and whether or not there's anything on here that you had been thinking about that we didn't put on. Because as we talked about earlier with the Charter Review Commission, we actually need to get things on here several years before we want them. So, but this is our best thinking right now. It's a very conservative list of projects. Nothing major is new on here. I'm very eager to get the climate control moving, which is the 13, 14 year. And what that is, is taking some measures in all of our school buildings to deal with the intense heat that happens in June and in August. So we'll come back to this and look for your feedback.
You know, Burke, it's interesting because you have the generator improvement here. That was a question that was posed the day one at the shelter. Someone did ask about how the new generator at the high school, you know, since we've done the renovation, is working.
Right, there was, there was an assumption made when we first opened it that it was going to work certain areas of the building. And it was actually determined that it was never hooked up or designed to do that. So now, you know, now that we know what's really needed during this type of event, we want to make sure we have maximum usage.
Well, I'm for one, glad to see Henry James made office because I've been on this board a long time. And I've seen that Henry James move, I think Erin, you were there.
I proposed that, yes.
Proposed that, move back down that list. A little bit of institutional memory there.
I remember sitting in the PTC meeting.
Kind of like your list at home, right? It just keeps moving down.
Right, right. Do you want to talk a little bit about that one? Because that was one that's been around for a long time.
You know, the middle school, it's such an important place, the library. And our library, with the space that we currently have in our middle school library, our librarian does a phenomenal job. But the library should be the hub of the school and a place where students can be and learn and have opportunity. And it was really one of the first things I saw when I came in as the principal eight years ago at Henry James. And likewise, the main office. There really needed to be a better way in which to bring it to the front of the building and utilize space there.
And safety.
Safety was very, very much of a concern at that time.
And still is. And still is. Right, because it's been the original, nothing has changed over the years.
But updating, you know, the building's 50-some-odd years old, and it really could use a, the library and the main office renovation would be a tremendous facelift for the building and for the teaching and learning that goes on there.
The, if you'll notice, in 2016, 17 are the science classroom modifications. Another really needed improvement, but we've separated them out in order to manage the cost and hopefully be able to move one at a time forward. But the science labs are very, very old. They were not addressed in the renovation that happened the last time. But I, who has a good institutional memory of when that happened, it was probably 15 years ago.
Yeah, they never came forward in that.
So that was not addressed during that renovation. So these are science labs that are well outdated and really should be addressed. Ideally, we would have done it all together, but it's just, it gets to be too costly.
And the Latimer Lane, because that also is another project that's been bouncing around over the past several years.
Yeah, I mean, that's been, that's been pushed back. Clearly, they've got a media center that is the smallest square footage of our, of all of our K6 schools. And the main office, again, is not ideal if you were starting from scratch.
And the art rules.
Similar to the, to the Henry James, there's some similar issues there.
And squadron line main office projects?
That is, that's a little more focused in scale, but it, but it has to do, you know, when you think about, there's a lot of difference between each building where you enter, how you enter the school.
Absolutely.
And going, you know, going straight to that, to that main office is really the ideal. Squadron is kind of around the corner. You don't, you have the nurse's office, which is, I think, part of this.
Almost want to flip.
Yeah, redesign that space.
Do you need to add the network infrastructure to 2016? And if you don't get it on there, will you lose it? Is it every other year?
Typically, every other, so probably should be added to the 17...
Good catch.
Yeah, 16, 17, yep. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, let's hope some of these projects that have been moving down the list over all these years, and they're very well-needed projects, and I don't think anybody, you know, would object to what there is. All right, thank you, Burke. Anything else, are we?
Not for tonight.
All righty, we are now on to exhibit nine, the 2011-12 school calendar. In light of this past week, we've... I would change it here.
First of all, I would just like to orient you to some updated revised copies in your folder. You have an exhibit. You have a school calendar, a current school calendar for 2011-12. You have a one-page document that outlines state law in regard to holidays and days in school or out of school. And you have a copy of the PowerPoint. And I actually wanted to provide you that in case you have questions to write down as we go through the presentation. I'm not sure if you have it on your screen or not, but I'll get, I'll get some.
We have it in our folders, too. We have it here, we have a hard copy right here.
So as you know, we've been out of school as of today, six school days. Today, we attempted to use today as a student day in school. And obviously, we were not able to do that. It was originally assigned as a professional development day due to voting. But it is a day that, there we are. So we are out of, right now, six school days, Monday through Friday last week and Monday of this week.
Right.
All right, so I want to start with this presentation and be very clear that there will not be a perfect solution to this discussion that we have. The administration has met, we've had several different iterations, thinking we would be back in school on Monday, on Tuesday, and here we are Tuesday evening and beginning of school tomorrow morning. So we will propose to you three different options, and for your consideration, I will propose them in order of what we think is in the best interest of our students and the best learning time as we go through. Obviously, as we think about the opportunities of days available, and we'll walk through this in a few minutes, clearly, we want our students in school for the best amount of time, for the time that's the most consistent. And we'll talk about that as we go through each of these options. I will hope to get through the presentation, and if we could have a discussion following the options, but clearly, please write down your questions along the way. It will get confusing, and that's why you have a calendar. And I will try to be as clear as I can as we go through these options. So as I said, we, our current last student day right now is June thirteenth, two thousand twelve. We do have five allotted snow days on the end of that at this point on the calendar that you're looking at right now, but our last student day without a decision, we haven't made a decision at this point now, is June thirteenth. Six student days that we have missed. We are anticipating that we could not hold school any later than June twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve, because at this date, there are three teacher days that need to be made up. There will not, there will be three teacher days, two that will be, need to be made up. There was a teacher day missed in August due to Irene. There was a teacher day today. And then there's always a teacher work day at the end of the year. So teachers do have to work right now three days beyond the student days. We have some other considerations to you, for you to be thinking about. We have a high school music trip to Italy, February eighteenth to the twenty-sixth, which is approximately a hundred and forty students with six faculty members that will be attending. And we have a tentative trip to China during the April vacation, which is a smaller group of students, twenty to thirty, with two to three faculty members. When we begin to look at the days that people think are available, I would like to just make it very clear on how we can use or not use these particular days. The days that are not available due to state law are December holidays and January holidays. This year, January second, because the first falls on a Sunday, it's recognized on the second, and Martin Luther King Day, which is on January sixteenth. Those are not days that we can utilize for student days in school due to state law. The other days that we believe, as the administration believe are not advisable, are President's Day, February twentieth, Good Friday, April sixth, and Memorial Day, May twenty-eighth. Those days are, let me, Good Friday is a day that's designated by the governor as a day for school not to be in session. President's Day and Memorial Day are days such as Veterans Day, where we could hold school on those days, but we would have to do some kind of observation in regard to President's Day and in regard to Memorial Day. As the administration, as we came together, we felt those were days that we would not advise to hold school. They would provide us long weekends during, after the first of the year. There are other calendar days that are available. If we, the President's Day, beyond that, there are four February vacation days. There is the March twenty-third Professional Development Day, full day. There is the April Vacation, five days available. There are June fourteen and fifteen in that one week, when June thirteenth is our last current day for students. The following week in June is June eighteenth to the twenty-second, five days. And then beyond that, as I said, we don't believe we could go beyond the twenty-sixth, but there is June twenty-fifth and June twenty-sixth. Total those up, there's nineteen school days available in which to make up the six days that we have now missed to date. So I'm going to walk through some options. The first option is making up the first makeup day, and I'll identify these as makeup days one through six as we go through this. Makeup day one as the March Professional Development Day. We have missed a significant amount of Professional Development Day because of Storm Irene, and six hours today, again, so twelve hours of Professional Development for teachers. I would recommend that that March twenty-third day be an early release. It does count as a school day, but we would still have three hours of Professional Development on that March day. Makeup days two through four would be in February Vacation, February twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That would allow a long weekend of Monday and Tuesday where students would not be in school. The last student day with this option is June fifteenth. Any future snow days that we will have, and we will have snow days, I predict, as we go through the winter, could be during June eighteenth to the twenty-second. We have five days there, and again, the two days, June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That gives us seven days possible for snow days.
How many days last year did we have, snow days? How many snow days?
Five.
Five last year, okay.
Which you made up at the end, the five snow days.
We actually used our March day last year. We did use that.
So we used that, so then we made it four.
Right, so we did.
Have we ever had less than three in recent memory? I can't remember less than three. And it might have actually only been four snow days. It was four or five, pretty typically between three and five. And a lot of early closings or late openings.
Which saved us from full snow days.
Yeah.
Option number two, again, six days to make up. We would make up day number one, our PD day in March twenty-third as an early release. Make up days two through five using February Vacation, four days, starting with Tuesday. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And adding makeup day number six at the end of the year, June fourteen, which would make our last student day, June fourteen.
A Thursday.
A Thursday. Future snow days added in June, we could use the fifteenth. The following week is five days, and again, June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And that would allot for eight snow days if necessary. The third option, and probably the least disruptive at this point in time, yet not one that is high on our list of options, is that we would do a makeup day on that PD day in March twenty-third, use that as an early release. And we could add, as we have the five days already allotted on the calendar, we could put four days, June fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, I'm sorry, five days, at the end of the year. That would give us our last student day on June twentieth. Any future snow days would be the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. If there were any more than four snow days, we would then have to look back at the February Vacation or the April Vacation. With that, it gives very little notice to families as they begin to prepare. So those are our three options for making up six snow days. I had said that I would give them to you in order of our preference, and what we're recommending is option number one, but it's certainly open to discussion. And we will, we will be asking the board to make a decision and vote on how we reconcile these snow days at this point tonight. So we look at the first option, go back to option number one. We're looking at the makeup day in March.
Why do you want the twenty-third? Why do you not want to take that other day? What, this is your recommendation, I'm just curious as to why it's not all the days?
Well, we're looking at giving opportunities for families in which to have a long weekend. There are-
A long weekend anyway.
They would get it with Monday, and they would get it with Tuesday.
I want to say, I've received a tremendous amount of email about the calendar. It's one of the things that impacts the family life the most. And a tremendous number of people have indicated that they have plans already for February. So we suspect that a lot of families are going to go anyway, because their plans are already established. So we're trying, it's a compromise, if you would, between providing instructional time that will allow kids to prepare for things like AP tests and CAPT and CMT, but also recognizing that if we take the whole February break, we will probably, probably be missing a lot of students. And so it's kind of a hybrid, if you would, for that reason. So it gives the students who are going on the trip, but also the families who already have plans in place. You know, students can make up three days to make up, you know, the whole-
Four or five days.
Four or five days makes it really, really difficult. So it's kind of, you know, taking a little bit from here and there.
So then the other question is, when at April?
Yes. One of the reasons, Erin probably has a lot more at her fingertips, but in April, we've passed the window for CAPT and CMT, it's done. So the learning time isn't recaptured then. It is recaptured for the AP tests.
And we're looking at coming off of a winter break in December, and we have the Martin Luther King Day in January, and we enter, we can have a long weekend in February. And we believe that's the most important time to have kids in the classroom in the sense of vacation time. As Dr. Alman said, certainly preparing for the CAP, the CMT, SAT, subject tests, AP time. Important time to have kids in class.
And when does that CAP start, March?
March.
When do they start?
March, it's usually the first two weeks.
Right, first two weeks in March, so.
Just out of curiosity, can you touch any of the days in December?
No, by law.
Not, so I understand the holidays, but what about that vacation week? We can't touch that? Or you just don't? I'm talking, if you've got the twenty-sixth off, that covers Christmas.
Right.
What about twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-nine, thirty? Not invited.
I think a lot of people travel at Christmas, and they do-
I was just, I just didn't-
We could, we could.
It was just a question.
The holidays are what the state law identify as days that we cannot, but they're very clear in their, in the state law that, you know, December holidays, it's very difficult, you know, with a holiday and a holiday, and trying to get kids in the middle of it. It's certainly, and this year, it's a week.
Right, it's a short break, as it is.
Right, it's not, if it, certainly if it was a longer break, it would be something that we would be looking at and considering. But it is, it's the holidays that maintain the, that you can't take those in December and in January.
You know, to Mike's point, though, we can settle on a calendar, but I do, I mean, we could have another really bad winter, and I, I think it's appropriate to tell families now that if we need more than the number of school days in whichever option you choose, that we wouldn't need to go to April Vacation. I think it's, and I also think that the board ought to consider a policy that states where we would go for extra snow days in future years, not just for this year.
I think we should do that, for sure.
What happens if it works out just the opposite? What if it's a really mild winter? I mean, the last thing I want to do is like, keep changing the calendar all year long.
We won't.
So you wouldn't get to the end of, or the beginning of February and say, we've got no days, and then start-
Giving back?
Yeah. That's just too late, probably.
That'd be very confusing. Plus, sometimes a lot of the snow happens in March.
Yeah.
So.
Erin, I missed why taking time from April is so undesirable.
Well, we're looking to have students in class during February prior to the March testing window. That we think that's a sustainable time of having kids in school is important. And getting the time in for not only the CAP, the CMT, but SAT, subject area tests, AP time in class. And we see February as more desirable.
And in taking a day or two at the end of that April Vacation, the versus extending further into the summer, it's, you consider it more desirable to leave the April Vacation as it is and extend?
And that was one of the conversations that we've had, is to provide a week-long vacation for students and for family. We didn't anticipate this week-long vacation, and it certainly was not a vacation. But that's what our thinking was around the April Vacation.
Okay, so part of the, part of what was driving this is a desire to preserve that week-long vacation somewhere along the way? Okay.
And maybe that April.
Yeah.
That April.
And a lot of the feedback I've heard from people, and some of them students, is that that's a really long stretch if you took April. That they would pretty much go from February right through to June with just two, three-day weekends. And that that, a lot of the-
If you eliminate April.
Right, if we eliminate April, that's just a long haul for the kids with that break.
Right.
Whereas February, they're coming off-
Right.
Right.
Christmas. Corinne, what do you think about this?
And if we still preserve a long weekend.
Well, as far as the options go, I prefer either option one or option two. But as far as the April break, it just, as far as a student goes, April break's a lot warmer. So it's more desirable as a student to have a break when it's warmer outside. But then again, as I have AP tests the first week of May, it is also kind of like, we're missing, you know, a nice week of review to study for, you know, the AP test. But I definitely would prefer February break being like-
Shortened.
Shortened rather than April. But option three, as, it gets hot in that school, and it's not- It's not really desirable to be in school for that long, and especially to have more snow days on top of that.
Did you have been in that school when it's been very hot, third floor?
Yeah.
Three or four years of, since we were in high school, so you do know, do know what the heat factor is like there.
So, Katie, I mean, you put you on the spot. I mean, as someone who's in there, who's got six rated students, what would you envision the better option? Someone's going to live this in the room.
I, I agree with Corinne in that those buildings get really hot at the end of the year. And I just feel like you tend to get more out of the kids earlier in the year than at the end, to be completely honest. I like the idea of taking away February versus April because of the testing window. So I would agree with either option one or two.
Any other questions? Well, what we have before us, as you see, is the three options, and we do have- Oh, I'm sorry, oh, please.
No, I just have a few questions.
Absolutely.
With the, I know the music, a lot of music students are going away in February. They were going to go for a February vacation. Would that be canceled if, because that's one hundred and forty students, so.
No, it would not.
Okay.
There's already been deposits put down, and that, that trip would go forward. We would certainly work with those students and with those teachers in which to ensure, and that, that was one of the reasons why we were looking at three days in February Vacation versus the four or five days of February Vacation.
So the only question that comes to mind is, why the one day? I think they were asked, I mean, if you're gonna, you're gonna come back on a Tuesday for one day of school, and then we-
No.
No, you're going the other way, sorry.
Right, we're going the other way.
An extra weekend.
Right, we're getting an extra weekend.
Why not a three-day week instead of a four?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm asking it the wrong way. Why, why wouldn't you take all four days? I mean, that to me is the debate portion. Is that, are we better off just biting the bullet now? Say you got the one day, that's the, that's the holiday anyways, and-
And those are great questions, and those are the kinds of things that we are really trying to sort out. I think the music trip is certainly one, three days, not that it's manageable, but it certainly, it's not four for a hundred and forty students to be out. And we thought that we could tack two days at the end of the year and school on a Friday. That that way, it would be, it's not perfect, as I said at the beginning. There's no good way to make this decision, but we're trying to take all of the considerations in, together, and to try to make the best decision for students and for families.
So, you know, a lot of the communication I've had, and I think this has influenced which order the options are in, a lot of the families that I've heard from, and I'm going to say, you know, I've gotten probably at least a hundred emails, are saying that they have, already have plans that are going forward. So we expect that there'll be a good number of abs, I'm not saying that's all. I'm sure, I'm sure there are families that I didn't hear from. We're kind of concerned about the amount of student absence that we'll have, and whether or not we'll effectively have, be able to have a full day of school with, you know, the majority of students there. What this, what this brings up for me is the fact that we have to notify parents. I think it has to be part of our policy that, you know, if, if parents knew right now that February days were where we would take with, you know, if we needed extra snow days, or if we had a disaster like this, then, you know, they could maybe temper their plans for vacations in February. So I just, in a way, I feel like since we haven't told them where we're taking the extra snow days, it's a little bit unfair to put all of the burden on one vacation, so. But, you know, again, these are just options, and we can live with any of them. I think it's just, you know, we're weighing the needs of families, the needs of learners against each other, and trying to come up with basically a compromise. And I think Erin said it well when she started, there's problems with every one of these, so.
I think we're going to roll to the next week, no matter what, based on our snow history. We're going to end up in that next week in some form or fashion for at least a couple of days. And I don't-
We give the eighteenth.
We give the eighteenth.
Yeah. You know, so whether it's two days or three days, hopefully not more than that, we're going to be into that week one way or another.
Right. If we have, if we have a winter like we did last year, we're now automatically into the week of the 18th.
Right.
I think we had a.
Which state ever eased? I mean.
180.
Our memory.
And they came out and said they're not going to.
There was a request last year, if you recall.
Bristol.
What, what year?
Bristol or Plymouth.
There was, there were, it was a natural disaster.
The flooding.
The flooding last year. So many natural disasters. The flooding last year, there were districts that lost 10 days of school, and they appealed and did not get a break, so.
State legislature has to.
Well, you can't appeal, but.
Yeah, but they weren't granted.
Granted.
Absolutely, they can appeal, and they, the commissioner spoke to the state board, and the, the decision was to hold to the 180 days.
So a lot of the schools ended up going right straight through end of June, June 29th or 30th.
They did.
Some districts, I believe it was in Bristol, also had a Saturday because they were now toward the end of that.
You can't go past June 30th.
By state law, we can't in Connecticut, we can't go past.
Those three teacher days have to happen, correct? The, the three days you need to make up.
There's no wiggle room on that.
We're paying teachers for those days.
Okay. I was just curious.
But those don't necessarily affect, if we do two at the end, the kids won't be in school anymore.
Right, right, right.
Right, that's why that's not on.
And if we keep the March one, then we won't, we won't be removing that one. We'll just do it as a half day instead of a full day.
It will count as a day in school, and we still would get the three hours of PD.
But the teachers still get some PD.
But it doesn't count for the two days, teacher days, that they've been out of school that they still do need to make up at the end of the year.
Another thing that we should probably mention is that you'll notice in the options that we also have more than five snow days identified. Given the weather pa, I'm not a weather man, so, but given the pattern over the last several years, five, you know, there have been times when we were very worried that five would be enough, so we're actually putting in a little cushion of, of a couple of extra snow days. Option one has seven days, option two has eight days, so I think to just make it five and leave us no room would be not wise.
Any other question?
No, I did have someone speak to me on, of one of our private schools in town, who said, you know, if we close on February, then we'll have a heat benefit with being able to not have to keep the school running for the middle of the winter.
But it's.
I don't think it's a consideration that should trump these other discussions.
What we have before us now, we have to move to vote on this, this evening, because as Dr. Alman said, administration, and as you know, parents do need to know as of tonight, please. For their, for, for plans, because we will not be meeting on November 22nd.
I just thought of one other thing, I'm sorry. We've got all the half-days for report card conferences, those are still taking place as planned? There's no change?
Yes, yes.
To that.
And those adding, if, if we have a half-day and adding more time on that day, it does provide for more instructional time, but it doesn't add as another day in school.
Okay.
So we're already in school for half the day, that's counted toward the 180 school days.
And March 23rd would just kind of give us four half-days that week?
Right.
If I'm remembering the calendar correctly?
Right. Right, what, report card conferences are when?
Yes, that's correct. That's for the elementary level? We would have four half-days that week?
Correct, for elementary, the five elementary schools.
Okay.
So the report card conferences are, are when?
March 20, 21, and 22.
That's right, okay. So what we have before us, as you saw through the PowerPoint of the options, and as I said, we do need to vote this evening. The recommended option for administration is option one, which is before you, which is the makeup day, one, which is the PD day.
Yeah, I just want to say, these are our thinking, but you may have, you may want a hybrid of one of these, too.
Well, if you're looking to move that motion.
We, I'm looking for a motion, I'm looking to move.
So I will move option one as recommended with a couple of comments. First of all, Erin, this is a great presentation. This just lays everything out very nicely, I think, for myself who finds calendar stuff as confusing as possible.
Normal calendar.
But for, for anyone, so I appreciate how this is laid out. Just a few other comments. I do appreciate taking three and not more days from February. I do feel that would be a disproportionate negative impact for people who do have that vacation currently scheduled. I myself would be receptive to taking a day or two from April, but I respect the desire to preserve one full week for individuals, so I'm comfortable with option one. And the only other thing I will throw out there, and that's not really a consideration for this, but for the future, we all got a lot of feedback from people. I know my wife and I posted something on Facebook that got a lot of responses, and a lot of people volunteered that they would be happy to get rid of the February vacation period in the future. So one of my takeaways from this experience is, you know, with future considerations of the calendar, we might want to take a look at that. But with all of that said, I will, I will move.
That's a big block.
I know, I know.
Out of that firing line.
You see, even when I'm moving the motion the administration wants, there's got to be a little bit of controversy. So with all of that said, I'm moving, I'm moving, I'm moving option one as recommended by the administration.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion?
So I'm inclined to be in favor with one question caveat. Maybe we do this as a separate motion. We should pick a date, Christmas, and if we have five snow days, we need to get vindication now of where those days are coming from. Because I still, you know, I, I think we're going to run fast into this window of getting to January 1 with a lot of snow days, and then still more to come, and we're starting one at the end of the year. So I think we should, we should put something on it.
Option one does say, we take it, we take it from June, and it gives us seven dates.
I agree, I just knock on wood that you might get into that window where you're really going to.
I think, right, beyond that.
Beyond the seven. Beyond that is where it would have to come from, April vacation.
And so I think we should say something now that if we get to pick a date, and we can, maybe, I don't know the right date, but.
We have to start taking it.
It has to.
But I think we should say that tonight.
What's the date we should take?
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
So.
So let's.
What's the half-day mark of the year?
I think, I think December's too early to make that statement because we do get slammed so late in the year, so.
January's when it storms.
Can we, can we, can we, what, can we get through this?
You do that as a separate motion.
Separate motion, let's, Chris made the motion, Susan seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the original motion to approve the option one as recommended by administration? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
This motion passes. Now, Mike, would you make a motion for?
Should we, or should we have a reconvening of the committee and just start doing a couple of these policies of what's our policy at the beginning of every year to make these decisions? Like you're saying, you know, what's the deadline for change?
I'm in favor of that, but you're not going to get that done until December.
Right, because we will not be meeting until December 12.
And, right, this, and I think what, Mike, you're trying to get at is really decide where the snow days are coming from right now, and that, in this option, it is proposed that they come in June, starting the week of the 18th.
So if we exceed seven days.
Seven days are available. Beyond seven days, then the only other option would be to take it, starting with April vacation. What would need to be decided, does it start with Monday of April vacation, or does it start with Friday and work backwards?
April vacation, what about Good Friday?
It's not attached.
It's April 6th this year, which is two weeks before.
That's a governor, that's a governor.
Not the recommended day.
Well, what, does recommended mean we can't, or recommended mean the governor recommends?
That we don't, that we.
They're designated by the governor. It says on this, designated by the governor.
I know, what does that mean in terms of being able to make the decision whether we take that or not? Just tossing that out there, right.
You could.
Right.
That's why it's under the not advisable category?
Yep.
Right.
So the only thing I'm thinking about is, and I don't know the, the right date, but is that if you get to January, you know, and it could be end of January, and you already have five days, burned up five days in December, you got to make a, you got to tell them now that in that timeframe, you're going to make a decision that's going to be off April. That's my view. I don't know how to craft the motion because I'm not sure what the right time is.
I think, I would say, given that proposal, I would say the end of January is probably a good bellwether to say, you know, if we've already used three of our five or seven days, we're going to be in trouble. So I'd say, looking where we stand at the end of January, and then we would notify whether or not we think we're going to need to.
And I'm not saying we have to cut the days now, I'm just saying we need to tell, I think, and maybe it's a motion that, you know, to the extent we're going to report out in the end of January, that if we're at a point in time where we're already five days into snow days, we're going to make a recommendation that it's going to come from the April vacation.
I wonder if just, we tell them now?
Yeah.
That's quite.
So there's a, a couple of things, is the, the June 18th to the 22nd gives five days. If we take the two, the 25th and 26th, it brings teachers to the June 29th day. So what I would want clarified in that conversation, in that decision, are, is it the five days in June and then off of April, or is it the seven days in June and then off of April?
I don't think it's all seven. If you looked at the emails that you sent us, people want to be out early in June, and we've already heard how hot it is in the schools, I don't think we go all seven in June.
I, sorry, I would say you do the five, and then if we get beyond those five, you go to April. That would be my.
So to your point, I don't know that we need a motion. It could simply be if, if it's a consensus that by the end of January, depending upon what's happened, we're going to make a decision. So we meet when? The 24th or the 17th?
We need the 17th. Where's our calendar? Where's our vote on?
Why do we need a deadline? Why can't we say the first five come out of June, the next two come out of April? You got to make a decision. We may not, we may not use any days.
We should make that decision tonight, that if we've used five, if, if over the course of the winter, we use five snow days.
We need January 24th.
Anything beyond that will come from April break. It's just a statement, I think.
That's fine, I'm not trying to pin it down either way, I'm just saying, I think maybe the easiest way of flexibility is we pick a date that we're going to make a report as we're, as superintendent, and it's going to come from April. I think that's the consensus, but we won't decide that until that meeting in January, because then we'll have the November, December, and January experience, and maybe we haven't used the snow days. That's all I'm saying, is I wouldn't necessarily vote to take the date, just recommend that that's where they're coming from if we get that far and we already used six days.
And my thought, and I guess what I'm, what I'm, where I'm confused with what you're saying is, why can't we just say tonight, if we've used five snow days this winter, anything exceeding that comes from April, and everybody knows walking out the door tonight.
That's fine.
There's probably enough uncertainty based of what's happening this week, you know, families are just like wanting to know, just tell me. And I think it would probably be helpful for us to say, five days, that third week of June, beyond that, we start with, I would probably recommend the end of the vacation or go back.
Five days.
But.
That helps.
I think that would help.
Uncertainty for, with graduation, too, a little bit more.
Then I also think this has to be either a calendar committee or a policy committee discussion, so that we can actually put it in writing, and we can alert families a year ahead of time, that, you know, or, they'll always know, they'll always know.
This is our plan.
This is the plan. And then if they make plans, they'll, they'll make those plans knowing what the, the risks are.
The plan of order, I left there, so you're going to take five days in June and then go to April, or you're going to take seven days in June and then go to April?
Five, five days in June.
About the 25th and 26th, just the 18th and 22nd?
Yes.
So it's a hybrid of option one.
It's a hybrid. Should it be more than the five days, then administration will look at.
And that's just for the year.
Right.
11, 12. Right, you want to specify whether you're starting in Friday and moving back?
We just said, we would start with Friday.
Friday and move back.
So we're, we're amending option one, removing June 25th and 6th, and we're substituting for that, that we would begin taking days, if we go beyond the five, June 18th to 22, we would begin taking days from April, from the Friday, working backwards of April vacation.
And with that being said now, graduation date is set when?
It's not. We don't set it till April 1st.
April 1st, so.
Because any snow days that happen after April 1st don't change our school days.
So parents need to know that, because there's always question when, when that would be. So we're, it's still the April 1st date.
That we will make the decision about graduation.
Correct, okay.
Lydia, can I, can I just factor, again, I'm looking at Good Friday as an option, and I'm just thinking, you know, let's say that we have to back into the April vacation four, four snow days, which means it leaves Monday of that week as a vacation day. Would we not want to consider using Good Friday as part of the plan to, you know, try to mitigate having four or five days have to come out of the April vacation, which basically eliminates the April vacation?
I think Good Friday is difficult in that people travel for their weekend with their families, and we're very careful about other religious holidays for other religions where people travel to be together with their families. I think Good Friday would be a very difficult one to take away.
Okay, that's fair.
The governor does designate both Good Friday and Thanksgiving Day. Those are the two days that fall into that particular category.
But just keep in mind that if we have four days that we're taking out of April vacation, we're going to have a lot of people who won't be there because they've scheduled a vacation. So I think your point is very valid, so I just raise it.
Oh, I don't think that's just any, no one wants to do any of this. I mean, people like their vacations. Keeping away is not really a.
Excuse me, Chris, one other consideration about Friday, Good Friday, is the fact that employees are entitled to religious holidays, and that may be an issue for a, a number of staff and faculty.
Yep.
Contractual. All right, so our motion, our previous motion has been set. Katie, you got that?
I, I think, yeah, you got the.
And with the amended piece?
Motion is really those first three things.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.